We will now call the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, October 1st of 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Aielo.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. We will open the floor for oral communications for closed session. If you would like to speak on any of the items, you have three minutes, and it is limited to closed session. While we wait to see if there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, I'll read them into the record. Item one, conference with real property negotiators regarding property 613 South Avalon, 312 East Chestnut, and agency negotiators will be our city manager, Albro, utility director Wilkie, our city attorney, Michael Hutton, and it's with Central Valley Auto Dismantlers. Item two, conference with real property negotiators, property 315 East Chestnut, agency negotiators again, city manager Albro, utility director Wilkie, city attorney Hutton, negotiating parties Wolf Gary Richards Trust. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and we will reconvene for the regular meeting at 6:30 PM. For Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Aielo.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Hutton, will you have any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session and discussed two real property negotiation items. There was no reportable action.
Thank you. I would invite Anita Friedman forward for invocation, followed by the pledge.
Praise to you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who has created us and sustained us and enabled us to reach this evening. We thank you for the gifts you have given us that allow us to serve our community. For you have given us eyes with which to see a vision of a brighter future for Lompoc, a city aglow with spirit and character. May she grow in strength. You have given us ears to hear the voices of reason and change that are so necessary for our personal and communal growth. You have given us the gift of smell to take in the fragrant scent of flowers as we honor our city's flower industry. You have given us minds so that we may discern between what is right and what is wrong, to distinguish between stagnation and growth. And God, you have also given us hearts to love what we do, to love the people we serve, and to love and revere your holy name. Please implant within the hearts of all a steadfast purpose to work for the safeguarding of freedom, justice, and peace. Bless us all with your spirit. We ask your blessings for our city's leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Grant them insights from your teachings that they may administer all affairs of our city wisely. Grant to all those here tonight such wisdom, understanding, and resolve that they may make the best decisions to lead our city in justice and righteousness. Blessed are you, Lord our God, to whom we offer our eternal thanks and praise, and let us say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This evening before we have the proclamations, we have a certificate of appreciation that I would like to present to Federico Chioni, if you will come forward. He has been on our planning committee for 11-plus years. You served under prior mayor Bob Lingle. You became my appointee. You saw us through the general plan update, and the zoning ordinance update, and the housing element update, and the, what else? There are so many things that you have been so dedicated to our community that I couldn't stand here and not mention all of those things, because, you know, we just put a couple of lines on your certificate. And you've done way more than this reflects. So, it says, "In appreciation for your 11-plus years of service and dedication to the city of Lompoc and its citizens as a member of the planning commission from December 18th, 2012 to September 11th, 2024." And I just, I thought, I can't just state that, because there was way too much work. To those of you that don't know, our planning commission is unpaid. Often the meetings have been not once a month, but twice a month. Then there are the special meetings, then there's the public hearings, then there's the joint meetings with council, then there's the special workshops in the community when we're doing things like general plan and zoning ordinance updates, and then coming to council meetings to be available for questions. And so, again, it's above and beyond service when you serve on the planning committee, and I can't thank you enough. And I just want to, this is not enough, but here is a certificate of appreciation. Let's take a quick photo.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city for these, yeah, 11-plus years, almost 12. I want to thank the city council, my fellow planning commissioners through the years, there have been many, my family for, you know, supporting me when I was not home and was busy doing this, and staff, which has always been amazing. And I didn't want to name any names, but I want to name one name, if I may, which is the one I acknowledge, Dwayne Holmdahl, who was the person who nominated me and appointed me first in 2012. So, this is, he's the one that made this possible for me, I guess. So, thanks, Dwayne.
Former city councilmember, board supervisor, Dwayne Holmdahl had an influence on quite a few of us, so we can't thank him enough and posthumously for all he's done for our community. So, the next proclamation we have is for our water professionals. So, do I have any of my water, oh, my utility director, and my water director, and conservation, and come on up? So, whereas we, the citizens of the city of Lompoc, place a high value on local choice over community services and therefore have chosen to operate community-owned, not-for-profit water and wastewater utilities, and as utility customers and owners of our water and wastewater utilities have a direct say in utility priorities and policies. And whereas now more than ever, the water industry is proud of the important role our essential workers play in making sure our communities have safe and reliable drinking water. And whereas thanks to technological advances by highly skilled and trained water professionals and the dedication of thousands of industry professionals in the state, California drinking water and treated wastewater meets most of the, some of the most stringent water quality standards in the nation. Your drinking water is filtered, cleaned, tested, and distributed in a process carefully managed by trained water professionals every day. And whereas California is steadily expanding the reuse of treated wastewater and pioneering the use of advanced purified recycled water to replenish aquifers, prevent seawater intrusion, and improve local water supply reliability. And whereas California is steadily expanding the reuse of treated wastewater, I read that already, that looking up caught me. Whereas water professionals at the city of Lompoc's public water and wastewater utilities work 24/7, 365 days a year to plan for the future, maintain and upgrade our systems, and improve the safety and resiliency of our local water supplies for our community. And whereas according to the Public Policy Institute of California, local public water and wastewater agencies invest more than $25 billion a year on local water-related programs and projects that protect public health and environment, improve local water supply reliability, replenish and clean up groundwater basins, provide water for fire protection, and protects against floods. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the city of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim, October 5th through the 13th, 2024, as Water and Wastewater Professionals' Appreciation Week, and extends to the city of Lompoc sincere gratitude and appreciation to the water and wastewater professionals who work 24/7 to provide excellent essential services to our community every day. And I have toured both facilities multiple times, and I am consistently impressed by how we make sure our over-50-year-old wastewater treatment facility continues to function on a very outdated system that hopefully one day we will have the money to modernize, but still provide amazingly consistently good quality water. And then our wastewater treatment facility, the mandated requirement to improve it, the fact that we serve below the mandated regional capacity and could service more in the area, makes me very proud to have a very lean but competent and efficient staff. So, thank you, and here is your proclamation, if anybody would like to say it.
I have some shy people over here, but I just want to reiterate the fact that we have some very dedicated and responsible people within both our water and our wastewater utilities, and I appreciate them every day.
All right. The next group are also under utilities for Public Power Week. So, who do I have from the power division? Alrighty. I'm so glad you're still here then. So, another important thing is that we have our own power. So, whereas we, the citizens of the city of Lompoc, place a high value on local choice over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric, and as utility customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility priorities and policies. And whereas the city of Lompoc's electric division provides our homes, businesses, schools, and social service and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas the city of Lompoc's electric division is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the city of Lompoc's electric division is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas the city of Lompoc's electric division will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electric to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1923. This year, the utility was created, so we just celebrated our 100th year last year, to serve all the citizens of the city of Lompoc. And whereas our community joins hands with the more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which puts our residents, businesses, and communities before profits. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the city of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim, October 6th through October 12th, 2024, as Public Power Week, to recognize the immense sense of pride in the cities of Lompoc's electric division and their contributions to the community and to educate customers, policymakers, and employees on the benefit of public power. And I just want to say that it gives me great pride that we are not PG&E or SoCal Edison, that we own and control our own power. Each one of our residents is an owner, not a stockholder, not a user, an owner of their public power, and helps determine the success and the health of our community by not having to pay between 40% to 60% more that our neighbors do for PG&E or SoCal Edison power, that we own our power generation and are 85% clean and getting closer and closer to the mandated 100%. So, we also run that department with a very lean team that is very, very well-trained. Priority is safety number one, and keeping your lights on is priority number two. So, Brad, I'll hand it to you to accept this one and say a few remarks.
The first thing I realized was, I'm not sure if APPA or the water professionals came up with this first, but the fact that they overlap, I think, is good, because we get to do this for all three of the utilities except for solid waste right now. Just like I said, for water and wastewater, I truly appreciate everybody that works in the electric utility. Rodney is one of our new conservation, he's the coordinator. And by having our own utility, we have the ability to have our own conservation programs funded by the electric public benefit charge, whereas people in our neighboring communities have to rely on PG&E to provide those benefits, which is much more broadly slathered across all their territory. We can serve our local citizens directly and help them with rebates, income assistance, and several other projects, one of which is coming up pretty soon, which I think will be part of the city manager's update. So, I just want to reiterate that I appreciate having those people that are part of the utility in our family, and I appreciate their work in and out every single day. So, thank you.
All right. Mr. Albro, city manager, report.
I know we just got back from the NCPA, the Northern California Power Association, and it's good to see that they're finding funding to, just like you said, Mayor, to go carbon-free, and it's good to see. Got a lot of big grant money coming in. You can go ahead and start. I want to kick it off with showing a video of the riverbed. We did a couple of drone footages here, one in March and one in August. So, I just wanted, I'll go ahead and let it play and let you see it. Like I said, this is March 11th, and you can see the number of encampments that were down there. our police officers, and also Brian Halterman, who worked with us to get the homeless into outreach and services. It took us a while, but I think the end result you can see is pretty nice to see how much work has gone into that area. And we concentrated on everything from Riverbend Park all the way out to 246, and we're starting to do the same thing on the H Street area right now, trying to get outreach to get them into programs and get them out of the riverbed. I don't think anybody deserves living in the river. Yeah, that's good. Also want to let everybody know that we got an award, we got approval, final award for the CAT RMS system, which is the Computer Aided Dispatch Records Management System. Thanks to Salud Carbajal submitting this and making it a part of the fiscal year 2024 federal budget. This is a great tool for our police officers, our responders, our dispatchers, ensuring that they can respond quickly and be out in the field longer. So, it's going to be a great asset for our team. I'm really happy we got that rolling. This is a little bit hard to see, but right now we're doing a lot of replacement of valves and water lines. You'll have a few areas that you'll have water outages. Hopefully they'll be pretty quick and have temporary services hooked up. There'll be some in East and West Chestnut, also the 1020 block of North INJ Street, and you'll see there's a little one over there in College as well. Hard to see, too, huh? Want to let everybody know that the Holiday Light Exchange Program is going to be kicking off. It'll be going from November 4th until January 24th. Our ratepayers can get up to five LED lights, which burn about 60% less energy when they turn in incandescent lights. It's also that time of the year for the Christmas parade. This year will be Dreaming of a White Christmas. It'll be on Friday, December 6th at 6:00. And individuals that are wanting to participate can go to the Anderson Rec Center and need to register by Monday, November 18th. On this last one, I really, I'm impressed with the management service team. They got the GFOA Award, the Government Financial Officers Association of United States and Canada. This is a very prestigious award. It's very hard to get, and it's for excellence in reporting financial statements. Yeah, I remember we got the first one, took a ton of work, and I'm so proud of Kristi and her team for maintaining that high level of excellence. And that's all I have for today.
Thank you for that. Any questions for the city manager? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to public comment on the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar, so if you would like to speak to any of these items, you may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium for your three minutes, again on items one through three. While we wait to see if anyone calls in, given the delay, I'll go ahead and read the process for consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council for any questions or removals or a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept consent calendar.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded by Ball and then Starbuck. Seeing no questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Parks and Rec staff on an overview of the 2024 summer programs.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Tonight, we have our team here to give an overview of the summer programming. This presentation is going to show all the hard work that they do, and 60 to 70-plus of the team members, then that we have in our crew. Again, with the presentation then tonight, you'll see the other hard work on improving the quality of life here in the city of Lompoc. So, I'll turn it over to them, and they can give the presentation.
Hello. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Joanna Kennard. I'm a recreation supervisor with the city of Lompoc Parks and Rec Department. I currently oversee youth and teen services as well as special events. And although summer is very chaotic, it's very fun, memorable, and very well worth all the hard work that our entire team puts together. So, here is an overview of some of the youth and teen camps that we did host this year. Summer drop-in is probably one of our longer-running summer camps that we offer. And for those of you who don't know, the summer drop-in camp began for the week of June 17th, and on average, our staff would supervise anywhere from 40 to 60 children between the ages of six and 12, in the afternoons at the Anderson Recreation Center. So, it gets very loud, very fun, and very warm in that gym, but it's really nice to have that facility come back to life in the summertime. Our day-to-day activities do vary depending on what the week's theme is, and very thankful for some of the collaborations that we have with all of our camps, including the library for providing bookmobile visits, the aquatic center for hosting our field trips, and then also, as you'll see, we collaborated with the police department as well as the firefighters this year. Another program that I did want to highlight is our Kicking It in the Park. Over the duration of seven weeks, the parks would host anywhere from 50 to 60 in a single Saturday. Over the course of the summer, we were able to serve 410 individual visits, which is amazing. A side note, part of that program is to introduce children and teens to the Tongstido program, which is also known as Korean Karate. That program was established over two decades ago with our department by the late Ted Jackson. Now, his son, Geronimo Jackson, continues his legacy, and just in the last year has doubled its participation. So, it went from hosting two camps a week to hosting four week by week. So, it's amazing. Another couple of free programs that we were able to offer was a Lego STEM program. And again, like I had mentioned, we collaborated with the police department. We were very excited for them to be able to host their junior police academy, thanks to a McDonald's grant. And again, with the firefighters, very thankful for the time that they commit to providing this memorable camp year by year. Another exciting thing for us, since we haven't been able to host it since pre-COVID, was we were picked as one of the Lompoc Unified School District programs. It was a free meal site this summer for children 18 years and younger, and the total meals consumed onsite were 1,625. That was all put on by all of our trained staff. We did have to take special training. So, very thankful for all of our recreation staff that kicked butt this summer.
Hi, I'm Sue Slavens. I'm recreation supervisor for the city of Lompoc Recreation Department. I do seniors, facilities, and help out the team wherever they need me. So, I want to talk about the volunteer program. The volunteer program is for kids from 13 to 15, and we could put them through a process over the summer. They apply on an application. We do interviews, and then we kind of say, you're not hired, but hired to help out through the, for the summer drop-in program. And I actually had a volunteer help me at the building attendant over at the community center, and he loved it. I won't tell you it was Annabelle's son, but he really, really loved it. But, we had 625 volunteer hours for six kids that really helped the program, especially the summer drop-in program. It was really nice to see that they come full circle, because some of them were kids in the program. Now they're volunteers, and now some of them are even working there, and some of them have brothers and sisters that go to the program. So, it was really nice to see that come full circle. Then July was National Parks and Recreation Month, and we had activities during the month. So, we had our daily calendar of activities that we did. We had free swim on July 11th at the pool. We had National Sunday Day for the seniors at 10 o'clock in the morning, but they loved it. And that was, Walmart actually brought all over, all the supplies and, you know, supplied the ice creams, the hot fudge, and they really had a really good time with that. Special events. There was two movies in the parks. We had the skate competition. We had the Fourth of July Family Fun Day, which is really enjoyable to, you know, be able to see the kids during the day, have the bike ride and all that. So, that was pretty cool to have. And we have the pooch plunge, which Hannah's going to talk more about with her aquatics partner.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Chad Dawson. I'm the supervisor of adult programs, youth sports, excursions. Some of the stuff that we held this year, in addition to our regular adult programming, is the youth evolution soccer camps and classes, youth evolution basketball. We had tennis lessons. And then the program that I kind of want to talk the most about is our Junior Giants coed baseball program. And this is a program for, it's a free program, and it's for children that wouldn't normally probably participate in baseball. And they get free gloves, they get free uniforms, and we had 180 children participate this year. And the program runs for eight weeks, like June 15th to August 3rd. So, that was, that was what we had going on in the sports.
I'm Hannah Wallace. I'm
Onto Aquatics. My name is Hannah Wallace. I'm the new Aquatic Supervisor for Parks and Recreation. It was my first summer, so it was exciting. We had a very robust summer. Luckily, we were fully staffed, which is pretty awesome. And has, we've carried over a lot of those staff into the fall season, so we're able to expand some of our programming, probably add some more, so that's exciting. Over the summer, though, June 10th through August 11th, we had about a little over fourteen thousand single visits for our rec swim. We offered a hundred and twenty-four hours of playtime during that time. I don't know if you've ever been to rec swim, but it is very busy, incredibly chaotic, but super fun, and the kids and the community love it. They're definitely having a good time. We did have ten water rescues during our rec swims over the summer, which is really good. We kind of kept tally. We get to thank the lifeguards at the end of the year for their vigilance and their service to our community, so that's pretty exciting. Lap swim, same time period, we had two thousand one hundred and six visits. We offered a hundred and ninety-four hours of lap time. And I don't know what to say about that other than our community loves lap swimming. They like to be able to come to the facility. They get to reserve their own lanes, and so they really that enriches the exercise portion and keeps people fit in our community. So moving on, group exercise. We had two hundred and seventy-two enrollments in thirty-two classes that were offered. We offer a range of activities. We offer aqua step. We offer warm water exercise. We offer high impact, low impact. And those are successful. We're looking to grow them, but we do have a pretty dedicated community that likes to come to our group X classes. And then finally, lessons. So lessons include swim lessons, adult swim lessons, parent-child swim lessons, privates, semi-privates, and also our lifeguard and swim instructor trainings. We offered two hundred and five classes over the summer with eight hundred and thirty-four enrollments. So we had a pretty good attendance. We have a fantastic facility. I don't know. It's basically a park with water in it. It's, some of the challenges that we have, it's almost like a landlocked ship. We're constantly painting. We're constantly chipping rust. We're constantly doing upkeep, but we're also constantly counting the smiles of the community who enters through our doors. So that's a plus for me. The Pooch Plunge. We did this right before our maintenance shutdown. Super popular. People were really happy. We had forty pooches and fifty-four spectators, and it was adorable. We partnered with the City of Lawnpoke Fleet Department, who gave us the little giveaway. I brought one to show you. Little poop bags that you can hook to your leashes. Super cute. We still have more because save the date. We have our Polar Pooch Plunge coming Sunday, December 22nd, before our winter shutdown. So be looking for that. We are looking, a lot of the dog part people want to partner with us, and we're looking to reach out to the county and the shelter. So yeah, mark your calendars. It's going to be fun. It's super cute. And then our end of the summer maintenance closure from August 12th through the 25th. You can see me. If you'd like a list of accomplishments that we have, I brought some with me. But we did, you can see the various pictures. We cleaned out the gutters. We changed underwater lighting. We changed out-of-water lighting inside the facility. We cleaned out our work yard, which was a feat in itself. It had a bunch of old, big, huge pool motors. We had to get tractors and partner with parks to accomplish those goals. And then just a lot of mitigation of rust, draining of the pool so that we could access and assess different things about the facility. So we do have a maintenance closure coming up again in December. The dates are there, the 23rd through the 5th. So just so we're all aware. And I think that's it for, for our group. Thank you very much.
So you guys wore me out just talking about everything that you put on. But I know that our community genuinely appreciates all of the opportunities for all ages, and we fully support all the work that you're doing and wish we could open the pool more hours and have more events. So just know that as exhausted as you made me feel, I'm sure the community is very thrilled with all of that, and we thank you for that. Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak to us on any item not currently on the agenda but under city supervision. So if it's within the city limits and we have control of that budget or those decisions, you're welcome to speak to us on the item. You have three minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Hello, Carl Jones. Okay, October 12th, 2024, 9:00 AM, Drop Tolerant Garden. Everybody knows that at Down Central. Workday for the Lawnpoke Valley Botanic Horticultural Society. We're inviting anybody that has hands and wishes to help us take care of another one of our city gardens and make it a lot better. Just come in, helps out, make a difference. It's for Make a Difference Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I did that. I'm a little follower.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and members of the City Council. I'm Anne McCarty, Executive Director of the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. Tonight, I stand before you with one simple yet profound purpose, and that's to say thank you. As our center celebrates fifty years of service to the community, it's essential to recognize that our success is built on strong, lasting partnerships. One of the most significant being with the City of Lawnpoke. Since our humble beginnings in nineteen seventy-four, when community advocate Joyce Howerton saw the need for supportive services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault in Lawnpoke, we've grown into an organization that serves thousands each year. Many of those services are provided right here in this city, and we take great pride in the work we've been able to accomplish with your help. From the funding we've received through the Lawnpoke Community Development Block Grant, to the in-house victim advocate who served within the Lawnpoke Police Department for many years, to our collaborations with numerous other Lawnpoke agencies, your support has been vital to the health and safety of this community. Our priority has always been to provide direct services to the citizens of this town, and the educational programs we've offered over the years have empowered individuals to find their voices and take control of their lives. We know the impact that we've had and continue to have. It wouldn't be possible without unwavering support of this community and the leadership of those of you who serve in this room. While I wasn't here when we first began, I've had the privilege of serving the center for over thirty years and witnessed incredible growth. This progress is the result of nurturing healthy relationships, persevering through the tough times, and staying dedicated to the work we do. Although I won't be here for the next fifty years, I know y'all are happy about that.
No.
I'm confident that with the continued support of the citizens of Lawnpoke, its leaders and everyone who believes in the vital work we do, one day, perhaps a grandchild of one of yours will stand here and offer thanks once again, this time for a century of service and partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, and good evening, members of the City Council. Before I start, my name's Diane Burns, and before I start, I got to say there's some really cool things going on in the Recreation Department in Lawnpoke. I'm here this evening to call attention to a wildlife issue in our neighborhood. We live in northeast part of Lawnpoke, District One on the political map. And in particular, I wanted to focus on the multipurpose trail that you could enter just right where Central Avenue dead ends and meets North A. If you walk down that path and go about a quarter mile, there's a large stand of eucalyptus trees. They've been there about eighty years. Those trees are habitat for wildlife, in particular, red-tailed hawks and two species of owls, bighorned owls and barn owls. The purpose of my coming here tonight, I understand it's been proposed by the city to either clear-cut or radically trim those trees, meaning topping them and hacking off the branches. And either of those actions would terminate the wildlife that live in those trees. Important issue I wanted to bring up is that there's a California State law, California Environmental Quality Act, where the acronym is CEQA. And what CEQA states is that, you know, entities like the cities have to look before they leap. They just can't wantonly destroy a habitat unless, of course, there's an exemption, which is provided by the guidelines of CEQA. In my public inquiry to the Public Records Office, I've been requesting any exemptions for those particular trees. I've not received any response that there is an exemption. And if it's true there is no exemption, then the act of trimming those trees or limiting those trees is a discretionary act. And that's an important concept because if it's a discretionary act, it falls under the guidelines of CEQA. So I would urge the city to please, before, you know, look before you leap, before you destroy those trees, consider the wildlife there because they're valuable assets to our community. And in closing, I want to say that in 2024, the biggest challenge for wildlife is the elimination and fragmentation of their environment. They're just running out of places to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Bridge, citizen. I'm here to support Diane and several people in the district who have come to me on this issue. At least ten years, those hawks have been living up there. They've probably had several generations of wildlife. They're part of an ecosystem, so we don't see them eating rodents and things like that, but they do. And so, and it's, that path is a nature path as well. So we should consider that when we start saying we're taking things out of, out of use. And clearly, that'll be destroying that habitat. So I'm not sure we have an urban forest person. I'm sure there's perhaps alternatives. It will be a short-term, you're solving perhaps a short-term problem, but that'll have a long-term impact. It takes about a hundred years to grow that habitat. So I'm here supporting them and suggesting that we look at that more carefully before we cut those trees out. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Osborne and City Council Members. My name is Maureen Bremms, and I live by the area. I live by the multipurpose trail and the Rio Vista Homes. I've lived there for twenty-five years, and I've lived in Lawnpoke for forty years. And during that time that I've been in the Rio Vista Homes, I've enjoyed that multipurpose trail almost every day, walking my dogs. And every day, I look up at those trees and I see the birds and the nesting and the babies and how they thrive in those trees. And I just want to join my friends and my concerned neighbors here about cutting down those trees. You know, we, we are stewards, really, of this great land and this beautiful land. And that means there's a responsibility that comes with that, and part of that responsibility is respecting and protecting the wildlife that coexists with us. So I just urge you to really think about and pause when we're thinking about doing away with a habitat for these amazing creatures. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Osborne, City Council. My name is Eric Rus. I live at East Bush, which is the northeast part of town, nice little quiet part of town, right by the edge of the river. We bought that house back in 2001. What we really liked about the area was quiet. At the time, there used to be sheep that were right next door. They make nice little sounds at night, very comforting, and not like the normal sounds that you hear in our city, you know, during the evening. One thing that we really like is right across the street, the stand of eucalyptus. The hawks and the owls are quite pleasant. They're very consistent. They always show up. The hawks are there pretty much year-round. They're there during the winter, usually when other birds will migrate, they're still in the area. There's been several generations that I know of of the birds that have been there. Ever since 2001, since we've owned our property, the hawks have been there. I'm assuming that they've been there ever since the trees were large enough to go. The trees had been there prior to all the development of the areas since that belonged to the state. And then, as that was going to be a highway, and I imagine that's why they planted the yuks there, for noise or whatever. Last year, when they were randomly cutting down those trees, it was very disheartening. We didn't know that that was going to happen. There was no notification. It just happened. Luckily, they stopped because the birds were nesting at the time. This year, I hope we do not continue to cut down those trees. They're beautiful. If you notice the opening shot that the city manager presented, you can see the band of trees right there. The very opening shot in the very far left corner. I get a little emotional. I love those birds. They're there. They bring me joy. And there is no other habitat for them to go to within a mile. So before you do anything, if you just investigate, look, and make sure you look before you leap or cut, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a caller? Thank you. If you could wait just one moment, if you can wait just one moment, we have a caller that's being transferred, so just hang out. Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lawnpoke City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to go give your statement. Please go ahead.
Oh, there's still somebody speaking now?
There's a slight delay.
Oh, okay.
You should be fine. And please just turn your TV down in the background if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Hi there. I'm actually one of the people that live right by the trees. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm actually one of the four houses that live right under the eucalyptus trees. And I love the trees, so don't get me wrong, but nobody sees the side of what, as for homeowners see, which is the debris from the trees, which are the roots that climb and go, grow into the backyard and steal all the water from the plants we have growing back there. The branches that fall. Look what happened in Las Buceos on Friday. A random eucalyptus tree just dropped on Highway 101, and that's what I'm afraid of with the trees behind my house. I can't enjoy my backyard because of the tree debris that falls. I have been asking for years for them to cut them up and trim them up for me. I really think that that would help, but at this point, everybody has the view of the trees, but nobody has the debris from the trees. And I'm just asking the city to do the right thing for the homeowner as well as the birds. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye. Bye.
Is that the only caller? All right. Come to the podium.
Madam Mayor, my name is Manuel Estrada. I'm also one of the people that live within feet of the trees, I guess. They do, they do grow leaves and things all around, but they also shelter, to me, because I belong to the Schumacher Maritime Association, the birds in the trees are sacred. And when you opened up your meeting today, you prayed to the Creator, and the Creator created those birds just as much as he's created everyone in this room, and they have as much right to live there as we do in our homes. And I'm also a homeowner. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no others call in, we will close oral communications and move on to item number four. Item number four is appointments. We have an application for the Utility Commission, and I believe the individual is for District Three. So Mr. Ken Ryan has applied, and District Three is Councilmember Starbuck. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Mr. Ken Ryan. Thank you for applying, sir.
All right. Councilmember Ball?
I'll give him a second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and congratulations, Mr. Ryan, and welcome aboard on the Utility Commission. All right, we will now move on to item number five. Item number five is consideration of electric rates, design report, adoption of resolution number 670124, modifying existing electric rate schedules, and we have our Management Service Director, Kristy Donnelly, returning to continue this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public staff. I do have some handouts that were in the front that I think that, I put them out there after closed session started, so I just want to pass those out. These are actually part of the, of the packet. They're item five, attachment four, but this is in color, and I didn't want you to have to dig through the big packet to identify this. We'll be looking at this in a little bit. But to start, tonight, we are going to be continuing the discussion on the electric rate design and proposed rate increase that we discussed at last city council meeting. I apologize ahead of time, there are going to be times tonight that I refer to that as last week. It was two weeks ago, I know that, but it was last council meeting. Staff was directed to bring forward additional scenarios that evaluated options for lower customer fixed charges, and we'll be looking at a slide in a minute to kind of go over, again, why and what a fixed charge is about. The plan for tonight really is to just review the four scenarios and to answer any additional And before we do that, and I don't have a PowerPoint, official PowerPoint presentation, we're going to go over what I just handed out, and those are available in the lobby for anyone who's here as well, and they're in the packet, like I said, item five, attachment four. But before we get into that, I want to address some of the sentiment that was expressed by council and the public at the last meeting, and just want to start by asking you specifically to make a decision tonight that is in the best interest of the customer. In doing so, keep in mind that as a locally-owned, long-term, viable, sustainable electric company that is meeting the state mandated requirements, that can keep up with the usage demands of its customers, that that in the big picture is important to the customer. There may be some desire to pause and feel like that is helping the customer because then it's not increasing rates. But that has to be balanced with the question of can the electric utility continue its 100-year history without making any changes? So I just ask you to carefully consider all the options tonight. I do want to point out that, you know, I, as an employee of the city, I've been hired to do a job, and it's my responsibility to apply my knowledge and expertise as a finance professional to making a recommendation. And the recommendation is for what I believe to be in the best interest of the city for sustainable viability. I didn't come into this with preconceived ideas, and I have always said, and you guys have heard me say this before, that I'm about the data. So let's look at the numbers, and let's let the numbers tell the story. And so let's go ahead and look at those numbers. The first thing I want to point out is that our current, well, relatively current, at May 2024, we are still closing our books, the operating cash was at a negative $4 million in the electric fund. Our cost of service study identified revenue requirements in order to cover expanded infrastructure. Some portions of the current system have capacity restraints that need to be addressed in order to allow for electrification. The electrification is both a current issue and a future issue. Right now, it is difficult, if not not possible, to get, I have a friend who was not able to add a Level 2 charger into their home because we're not currently able to permit it, because we don't have the capacity at this time. So it is a current issue. It is also a future issue, soon future, because we have state mandated electrification requirements. So the cost of service study identified our revenue requirements, one, to expand the infrastructure, and then that infrastructure, it is going to be, at least a percentage of it, is necessary to, sorry, got discombobulated there. System upgrades are planned to be debt-funded, which requires adequate debt coverage. In order to be able to meet the infrastructure expansion, we are going to have to do some debt funding for that, and in order to be able to do that, we have to be able to have debt coverage ratios. And then ultimately, we need to be able to recover our reserve. There may be discussion on what that reserve should be, but negative $4 million is not it. Some of the other numbers that were asked last time, payment plans, we currently have 900, as of today, there are 944 customers on payment plans. Those payment plans are a total of $767,000 of charges. Our utility billing accounts receivable, this is not audited, and it does not include our year-end accruals yet, but that is at $955,000 versus, two years ago, it was at 1.8 million. So we have made some headway into our accounts receivable, and this is the late accounts receivable. Okay, some other factors as far as numbers go, we have about 260, what I'm calling zero usage customers. Really, it's very, very low usage, so less than 26 kilowatts usage. These are customers that are not contributing toward, or their portion toward, non-usage costs, so things such as meter reading, meters, billing, the staff and the systems that are required to do the billing, and the distribution lines, and maintaining those distribution lines. So we have about 260 customers that have those, that low rate, and so we look at those and say, those are most likely, in most cases, vacant homes that have meters, potentially bank-owned or potentially people who live here seasonally. Our current structure, as it is right now, commercial customers are subsidizing residential customers, and that is based upon our cost of service study. And Prop 26 does not allow for subsidization across rate classes. So the rate adjustments that we have proposed, if you notice, they had increased the residential at a different rate than the commercial, and the purpose of that was to be able to begin to address this disparity where some commercial is subsidizing residential. And the final point that I wanted to just summarize is that without a base customer charge, higher usage customers are subsidizing the lower usage customers. So low usage, if we were to eliminate the, or not, or have a lower customer charge, those lower usage customers would not be paying for those non-usage type things like the distribution lines and the billing and the meters, wouldn't be paying the proportion that is attributable to them. Low usage customers have the opportunity for rate assistance available, and the reason for that is so that they can be subsidized equitably rather than by higher usage customers. In fiscal year '25, our budget for rate assistance is $75,000. In fiscal year 2023, we haven't run the final numbers for '24, '23, we, a total of $38,000 was used, and that number, it will increase because we've increased the amount that is able to be contributed for rate assistance from $9 to $18. That was a recent decision the council approved. But what that shows is that there is room for additional customers. Right now, we have 406 active customers using rate assistance. So there is room for us to be able to contribute to additional families who are impacted by increased rates. So that's kind of my setting the, setting the stage, reminding us, addressing some of the questions that came up, but let's look, let's go ahead and dive into the examples. I'm going to turn on the presentation. I just have three slides, and two of them are this page, so I doubt you're going to be able to see them from, from here, but I'm going to go ahead and put those up real quick. Hold on. Okay, so this is just from the last presentation, and this just is a reminder of what a customer charge is and what its purpose is. To recover costs for connection to grid regardless of energy consumption. So the ability to have, the ability to turn on the light, not whether you do or don't, but the fact that you can have a switch that is metered, and that if there are issues with the distribution of that, that we have staff who are able to maintain those lines. And there's our example. So I do encourage anyone who's following along online that this is in your packet, is, was online as well. It's item five, attachment four. This was out in the lobby for anyone else who wants to follow along. If I get into the weeds, I apologize. I'm going to try to kind of give you guys an example. This, we came back with four scenarios. The original scenario is what we presented two, two weeks ago at the last council meeting. We added on to that scenario two, three, and four. Each one of those has different customer charge bases. So scenario two, if you look on page, on the, the smaller of the two sides, is the first page, okay? And you can see it says year one in the gray at the top left, right up here. The customer charge on the original was based at $11. The scenario two is at $5, as is scenario three. So I'm just kind of orienting you to the, to the table. On the left over here, we have our residential is D1, and our small commercial is A1. Those were the two categories that council seemed to be most concerned about, and it is where the majority of our users are impacted. This is the kilowatt, and these are the different ranges. You can see here where it says 325, that's in bold, that is our average in residential use. So that's, the average user uses 325 kilowatt hours a month. The A1, the average is 1,700. Now, we put in here also some of the lower usage. Now, that 265 italicized there is not a random number. That is actually the average use of those who are on rate assistance. So it gives us an idea of where our fixed income lower, the people who are requiring additional assistance, what their usage average is at, is at 265. So the yellow is what are, the current bills are. Our, the blue is what PG&E is currently. And we alternate on pages one and two, we go from year one, and then the pink becomes year two, and then we go back to gray, that's year three, and so forth on year four and year five on the back. You can look through averages, but not everybody does just the average every, every month, right? Some of us have, typical households may have higher usage one month or lower usage another month. And so I, in addition to looking at averages, I came up with, and this was probably late at night when I was working on this one night, so I apologize if these are a little hokey, but we've got Nana, is A, and Nana lives by herself and has low usage maybe nine months out of the year because it's her. But then, over the summer, she, and it could be Papa, too, I suppose, it could be that he has average usage of, average usage over two, in two months because the grandkids are visiting, and, you know, the grandkids don't always turn off the lights. And once a month, once a year, everybody comes over to the house for the holidays and is staying for longer than they really were invited, and, and there's high usage that month. And this is just a random scenario, right? This isn't, like, I didn't go out and interview people or anything, I just came up with kind of some typical, maybe, combinations of what usage might be so that we can see how does this impact, how do these rate, these different scenarios actually impact these users at these different rates? And so we used, for, for Nana, low usage, which would be this 265, for nine of the months, and we use average usage, which is the 3, 3, I can't even read that, 325, that's why I have it printed out, and high usage one month for 500. Did the math, came up with a total annual use, and then divided that into average monthly bill. I get into this, this is, you know, crunching numbers is what I enjoy. So I, I'm going to try to slow down back up, and I'm hoping that you guys have had a chance to look at this a little bit and maybe have some questions, but I do want to point out a couple of things, and then I may defer to Bob Cross to come up and also speak to this because I think that having different perspectives and interpreting this is important. But I want to point out in year one, for the low-usage domestic user, residential user, our original proposal with the $11 base charge, the, the low-end user is actually paying less at 54, 35 than they would in scenario four, which is where there is no base charge. And that is basically because in order to be able to meet our And that is basically because in order to be able to meet our revenue requirements, if there's no base charge, then the hourly, the per-usage rate goes up. And so, the, this remains consistent like that, even if you look at year five on the back page, there is a little bit of a difference there because at that point, the base charge is 31 for, in the original. But it's not as much of a difference that you would think. The base charge being zero or $5, the rate is at 77 versus at 79. So, that was one piece that I wanted to point out. There's all kinds of data on this, but that was the main thing that I wanted to point out. If you guys have questions on specific scenarios or combinations, assumptions that were made, you know, this is a time to discuss. If you want to hear somebody else's interpretation of all the numbers because you're tired of me talking, that also is a viable option.
Councilmember Bega.
Kristi, I think it would be a little bit more, it would be easier to understand if we just went down the scenarios of what it costs, what the impact is monthly to the, instead of doing all the mathematics that say, hey, this one or that one. I think the people are more interested in how is it going to impact them monthly? I understand the commercial, you're saying that it's, we can't subsidize residential, but we're doing it. So, maybe you could clarify what you meant by that because you said we can't.
Well, we are not supposed to be doing that. That rule came out after our last cost of service study. So, this, we have just now identified that the commercial is subsidizing, is subsidizing the residential.
I got you.
And so, we have to move towards not doing that.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense because if we can't, we shouldn't. And, you know, it makes sense, but I'm saying that the, we're pushing the minimum charge here, and we keep pushing it because it lowers it or raises it for some people, but to keep it stable, the calculation is a little convoluted when you use that. And I understand adding a new fee, and I understand how that helps you guys stabilize by adding that fee, but every time you add a new fee, it's subject to an increase. And I understand that, and that's to the benefit of the city. And I think that, for me, if you were to look at the scenarios, we have these scenarios that we have, and I think that the question was, if it was $5 or if it was $10, regardless of the charge, I think they're monthly, they're worried about what they have to pull out of their pocket a month, you know?
Right.
I think we're overselling here. I think if we keep it simple, I think it'd be easily more understood, and we could make a better decision.
I agree. I think this is a lot of data to look at.
But I appreciate everything. I'm just trying to say, how do we swallow this and cut it up and make a good decision without going through all this up and down and whatever? I understand the mandatory charge, you guys are pushing for it. I asked for us not to use that as a factor, to see where we're going with that. Because I understand the subsidy date, but the other part of it is, we have a 2020 mandate on new housing, which have solar involved and electric. And it sounds like we don't have a structure. We have a bunch of large housing developments that are coming into town, and when these people come in, I would say that you guys are saying that we have people that aren't paying their fair share here, but when people hook up for solar, are they going to be in the category of not paying their fair share because we don't have a structure or a substructure from which to charge that because we want to recoup whatever it is? Just a question, okay? Because we have some large developments that, there's over 600 homes getting ready to be built. I don't know if the city is even considering the solar part of it because there's a 2020 mandate that says they have to be retrofitted with solar, and we should have a mechanism for them to be able to hook up. And again, we're talking about leaving the lights on or leaving them off, but that's kind of frivolous considering the fact that we have housing that's going to be utilizing this because we're going toward green, but it depends on what we charge, whether we want you to go green or not.
Okay. There's a lot, and I think I have actually some answers. We do have-
And these are just respectful questions. I just have to get it out, okay?
Absolutely. I, so, as far as solar goes, we do have a solar option. That isn't something that we have addressed to change in this study because it's complex, and we were on a pretty quick timeline to be, we had been asked to bring this back because of the 30% rate increase, and so, we plan to bring back more in-depth review of solar and the comprehensive way to charge out or incentivize solar equitably for all customers. And that is something that we are looking to do in a matter of months, not way down the line. But we wanted to make sure that we got this in front of you to begin with, and then we will be dealing with the solar piece of it in short order. What I was going to say is that we could look at one particular example and look at the different scenarios. What I don't know is which one everybody would like to look at. You know, do we want to just look at the average? Do we want to look at one of these typical, potentially typical or atypical households that, you know, absent-minded traveler? That was who I wanted to be, by the way, that, anyway. So, I would welcome some feedback on which one you'd like me to dive more into.
Can I still ask a question?
You're still on the floor?
Thank you, okay. You know, personally, after looking at the five scenarios, I think that looking at the one that probably is the most reasonable for the residential customers, I'd say I'd like to look at scenario number three and compare it to anything else that somebody else might want to look at, maybe four. But we need to do some comparables so that we can see where we're going with the rate study. The request for a stable rate or a lower rate by councilmember Ball, I think it probably will address that and probably bring out a few more questions. But I mean, to help give a little guidance unless somebody else has some input.
Councilmember Ball.
I've got just a couple of questions, and I might help kind of narrow this down a bit for us. But let me get through some of the weeds first before I make a commitment towards one scenario or the other.
I'm working on closing the books and getting ready for an audit, so I am right in the weeds with you, sir.
Okay, so, my first question, is all four of these scenarios legally defensible? Meaning, if council chose one out of these four, we could pass it as law and it's defensible?
I hesitate on the law word because I don't know that that's the accurate terminology for rates.
I'm not going to put that on our city attorney at the moment, but the reason I'm asking that is, we talked about, and again, it's a gray area, we talked about the idea of subsidizing different classes, and I can accept that. We can't do this, and we've got to be careful, this class will subsidize this one. But by definition, because we have four options of different rates for different classes, somebody subsidizing someone else, is that a fair statement?
Well, we're, what we need to not do ultimately is having one class subsidize another class. And what, and this gets into more of the weeds than what I have the expertise in doing because it has to, I don't, remember back to the, and I can bring up the slide if we need to, but there's the discretionary income in the way that we assign discretionary income to the different classes. And so, I believe that that is, is kind of how we even out the subsidization. The, and Brad, I think, has some more insights to that than I do, so I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over to him.
Brad Wilkie, utility director. Your question is interesting because the fact that we are now on notice that we're not abiding by Prop 26, we have to do something about it. The fact that we're proposing that to happen over five years so we can incrementally adjust it so that one class is not subsidizing another class. Your question is, in year one, we're not doing that. In year two, we're not doing that, but we're getting closer. In year three, we're not doing that, but we're getting closer. All the way up to year five, in year five, we're able to say that we're not having cross subsidization. So, as long as we're, have a scenario that goes that direction, it should be, meet the requirements of Prop 26.
So, which of these scenarios prevent us from heading that direction?
The current one.
So, any of the additional scenarios that have been offered, we have some wiggle room to achieve our targets?
Each one of those will get to the point where A1 or A12 is not subsidizing D1 or D2.
Sure.
So, the other question that kind of comes up, there was another part you had that I wanted to kind of address, and one of the reasons-
There's no way to get away from sort of, somebody's getting a little bit of a discount, somebody's paying a little more.
Your question about subsidizing within a rate class, that's more about equity than it is about law. So, do you want to have a policy where you're charging high-use customers a higher rate so that the lower-use customers don't have as much to pay? So, that's really, there's not a Prop 26 issue within the class, it's just an equity issue.
So, I definitely have an opinion on where equity shows up between these four scenarios, so I'd love to follow up maybe on that in just a second. Now, you'd mentioned that there are several ratepayers that were, I mean, we don't know for sure, we're kind of, we don't know whether they're seasonal, whether they come in a lot, or part-time during the year and then they leave. Do we know how many of those are actual seasonal people versus people that just turn all the lights off and try to conserve the heck out of, and keep their bill down? Do we have a definitive on that?
That, it's a difficult question because we don't ask that level of detail of our customers, you know, are you living there? But we do know that we have 260 that are below 26 kilowatt-hours. Of those, most also had low, very low, less than two units of water. And so, that kind of gives us an idea that those are vacant or not used.
Okay. But there is a chance that there could be some folks that maybe only flush the toilet once every two days and turn every single light off, and is there a chance that there's some folks in that category?
You know, less than 26 kilowatt-hours is less than $5 of usage. I suppose it's possible, but it's not the norm. I mean, you're talking, you know, a total of 260 people, of those 160 people have very little water usage. So, we're not looking at average, you know, we're looking at less than 1% of-
Fair enough. I appreciate that. And let's see. The third question is, do we, so we talked about rate assistance, and I think we're, I think everyone understands that we're talking about rate assistance as a mechanism to help people that have the least to be able to help pay their bill. Do we proactively offer rate assistance to people, or do we wait until they come and ask for it, or how does that work?
I know that our conservation team is working hard to get the word out about our rate assistance program, and it is something that is, I can overhear our billing staff who are fantastic, that when they're talking with customers about, we're, you know, potentially getting late notices, or that they are offering every possible option to them, rate assistance being one, other community options as well. And so, they are very helpful and are looking to provide as much input as they can in that regard.
Thank you for that. You mentioned the word conservation. That really leads me into my second question. This is, at least for me, this is where I would narrow it down. From my perspective, I respect all the numbers, all the scenarios, I know what they're trying to accomplish, but scenarios three and four are the best for me because of one thing. And when I think about a single mom that maybe has a couple of kids who's working her butt off to try to make things work, and she's got to figure out how to, you know, in five years, she's going to be hit with $31 a year. Now, this may not be a large number, but my complaint about scenarios one and two is specifically about conservation. If someone has been putting in the effort to conserve, to turn the lights off, to do everything right, and then five years later, they've done everything they possibly can to conserve, it doesn't matter anymore. It doesn't matter if a private citizen conserved, it doesn't matter if a small business conserved in scenarios one and two, because with, it doesn't matter, their rate is going to go up. So, what I mean is, like, they can't keep turning the lights off. There's no more incentive for them to conserve power because they just have a cost now. So, one of my concerns with scenario one and two, and I'd be interested in some pushback, are we taking away conservation in scenarios one and two?
Yeah, I actually think that the numbers tell a different story.
Go for it.
And let's look at year three as an example, that way I don't have to turn my paper over. And it's, we also know that four and five, the further out we go, the more variables there are. And so, I think three gives us a good, it's not the first year where, you know, $11, we've had a few years where we've bumped it up. And so, let's compare in year three, our average user, who is using 325 kilowatt-hours, and maybe that, like you were saying, the single mom who's doing what they, she can and, or a single dad doing what he can, trying to conserve in scenario, in the original scenario, where there's a $21 base charge. At 325 kilowatt-hours, the bill would be $77.03. That's under the original. Scenario three, with a $5 charge, base charge, that bill would be $79.81, so it's actually a little bit higher. Scenario four, where there is no base charge, a $0 base charge, that bill is $81. Now, to say that we can't conserve is actually, I think, is where the assumption is missed because if you then look at 265, so if somebody goes in one month from 325 down to 265, in the original, they're going to save just over $10. It's, their bill's going to drop from $77 down to 66.69. And in scenario three, it's going to drop from $79 down to $66. In both scenario one and scenario three and scenario four, it's going to be $66 in all three cases for that low usage. So, there is a motivation to conserve because they would have saved $10 in all those situations. In scenario three, they may have, I'll give you, there's a $2 additional savings for that conservation. But what, what they also have is the, the what if they don't, what if they have a month where they have higher usage? Maybe they're, they wanted to have a party for their kids, and they were cooking and all the different things that we do in our homes, and they had one month that went up to 500 kilowatts. In scenario, in the original scenario that we presented, that bill would pop up to $115 at 500. And so, it was an increase, but in scenario four, it would increase 15 more dollars than that, or 14 more dollars than that. So, there's more volatility in scenario four and in scenario three than there is in one and two. Volatility for the customer, not just for the city. So, that helps.
Yeah, I think, at least from my perspective, as I look at some of these higher-end numbers, and again, I think the ones that I'm looking at is either three or four. And the reason I go back to three is I'm open to that, is from our original discussion a couple of months ago, or a month ago, is we had talked, and I kind of rolled the tape, we had talked about maybe having a $5 or $10 fee, but we hadn't talked about increasing that every single year. So, again, maybe I'm off here, but I was looking for some stability on that fee portion. So, there's just predictability there. For me, three and four, if I know that fee's there, then I can choose and still have some sort of incentive to turn the power off or to conserve. And I know where you're coming at with those numbers, but I still think it takes away a little bit of incentive. If somebody just knows the fee and they're going to pay it, there's not necess, there's not the same push in one and two to go conserve. I just don't see that the same way, but I can appreciate where you're coming from, but I just see it a little bit differently there. So, I guess for me, four would be my preference because I feel like that asked a little bit more of those that are on the top end to pay a little bit more. But I'm open to scenario- But I'm open to scenario three because I think that goes back to what we originally talked about, about having a fair, basic, small fee that we can build from, and if that inflated the rates a bit and it was seasonal, maybe that's case, but at least it was still only five or 10 bucks.
And I just want to make sure that I'm understanding when you say that you, you're saying that in scenario four, for an average use, use that the bill being $81 over the original, with the bill being $77?
Yes, but remember, we're only, you're using the definition of exactly that 325 or the 265. I'm introducing that there should be, it should be up to the customer, they should still have some incentive to say, look, I, I want to keep turning the lights off, I want to keep conserving, I want to get the number down below 325. I want to get it as low as I possibly can. And I feel that if we just take away that incentive for doing that, maybe we're missing that a bit.
Okay.
But that's just my personal opinion and maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's how I feel about it.
Councilmember Ayala.
So when we, when we take away the base rate fee, the percentage of rate adjustments, so the percentage of their usage goes up.
The cost, yes.
So I, I think maybe that's what we're missing is, is that we're focusing on this $5 or, or $15 or $10 fee. And that's a flat fee, however, however you dice that fee, the more that you eliminate that fee, the more percentage will increase on their actual usage. So it's, I would rather get charged a monthly fee of $10 or $15 on my bill and know that my usage is going to be rated or, or calculated at a lower percentage. That's the incentive, is, is that my usage will be calculated at a lower percentage if I have that fee. You take away that fee, that increases the rate, the, the percentage of what their, their bill will be calculated per usage. So the incentive is in finding at least a fee so that it's a minimal fee. And that's what creates the parity for everyone that's on the system. So that we're all paying into the, the overhead of the, the metering and all that, all of that stuff. But even a percent, 2 or 3% makes a big difference. And if somebody truly is trying to save energy, they're going to actually see it because their percentage is going to be lower. But if you don't have a fee, the way that it's explained and the way that the grid shows it is then your, your monthly percentage goes up because you still got to make the money to make the, the enterprise run.
What I would add to that is that it actually, the percentage isn't directly proportional. And the reason I say that is because if we don't have a base fee of something, then those 260 users that are zero, what I call zero usage, or a low, very low usage, they're not paying anything or they're paying a very low amount. And so the customers that are using average, even lower than average, but still enough to be above the base charge, they are subsidizing those 260 people. And so we, part of the goal is to find the sweet spot of where that minimum charge is, or not minimum charge, I apologize, that's a mis-term, the customer charge. So that it is, so that the people who are, or the customers who are not utilizing a lot of, a lot of power in a particular month, still are paying what their fixed rate portion is.
Councilmember Ball.
I think that's a very valid argument, and that's why I stay open to maybe scenario three because it does have a very fair base rate for both domestic and for, for businesses. So I don't know, I'd, I'd be open to that. I think the only other thing I might add, and I'm not frustrated at you or staff, because I know you guys are so busy and there's so much going on. But we're, we're living in the, the not-too-distant future. Solar is not, you know, kind of a, a new thing anymore, it's a, it's a vital part of energy generation, et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate that we're going to have a comprehensive discussion on that after we get all of this. But I just, I'm a little frustrated that we can't thread a needle, use the word comprehensive. I'm frustrated that we're not having a comprehensive conversation that includes maybe, oh, maybe there's an openness to a slightly higher fee. Maybe I'd be open to that. If we're, we were able to open up and modernize a little bit our approach to breaking even on solar. Folks that have a moral compass that says, I want to use the sun more than your electricity. I don't think it's fair for the city to dictate whether someone should or shouldn't use solar based on how cheap our rates are, that should be up to them. But I also understand we shouldn't necessarily lose money on someone having solar on their property. I do think it's a valid point that Councilmember Vega brought up about, you know, state mandates with new housing and commercial integrating solar. And so I'm just concerned that, you know, over time, we're being asked to figure out these numbers, come up with $80 to $140 million in capital expenditures to upgrade our infrastructure, to meet the oncoming electrification that's happening in California. But we're still not having this conversation about how solar might play a role in that. Now, it's fair, I've heard from city staff, we should be very proud of how much solar power we generate through NCPA. I've learned a lot about that today, and that's great. But I still hear a lot of frustrations from folks who just wish, for their own reasons, that they could do solar more easily in Long Polk, but not necessarily to the detriment of our utility, they just wish, wish the system was a little bit better. So I'm, I'm just curious, I, I'd actually be open to a little bit more of a higher fee if we could embrace a few more of the folks that want to participate in the system. I hope that all makes sense.
Do we have any more questions for staff? Ms. Ayala?
I know that solar is something that we need to move towards in the future, and I fully understand that. But what I'm understanding from staff is that, that information is going to be brought back to council because there is, there's work that would need to be done, if, if I'm understanding you correctly. There's work that would need to be done in order to make us a plant that would be able to produce or even measure when it comes to solar. There's, there's, there's things that would need to be done, and that is going to cost money as well, correct?
Yes, the, the capital piece, I believe, is already, is, we've looked at that in this revenue, in the cost of service study. What we haven't been able to do at this point is look at a comprehensive rebuild of the solar program as far as the rate structure goes. And so we have the, the data, but there is, there's just additional. There, there were a lot of moving pieces. And we, we got to the point where, you know, they talk about, and using analogies and metaphors or whatever, but, you know, you eat an elephant one bite at a time, this was, it was just too much of a bite. And so we wanted to be able to bring something that was tangible and moving us towards the right direction so that we could make that step. And then we'll look at the, the rates, rate structure of the solar and being able to look at the NEM and the G1 rates separately. Does Brad or Bob have anything to add to that?
One thing that happened when SP1 was introduced, probably in 2003, that was the impetus for the NEM billing rate that PG&E, Southern Cal Edison have that we mirrored, was to help develop the solar industry. Fast forward to today, there are large-scale solar plants being proposed all across the state. Not at the three or four or five kilowatt range, but at the 100, 200, 400 megawatt range that can at scale produce power at a much lower rate than you can ever think of doing on a rooftop scale. So the economies of solar have kind of changed from, let's try to get the industry aboot up to an industry that's mature now that can basically outstrip the most efficient natural gas-fired plants in California. So the benefit of that is the large scale. We, the NCPA is looking at one project that's 400 megawatts. We, as a group, can't take that much. But the other side of it is, the existing mature solar industry is already creating enough solar power in the springtime months where nothing else has to be on at all for much of the day. So we have power that we can get delivered to us at basically no, no cost at all except for the transmission. The problem with that is we still have to pay for the solar rooftops that we have that are getting that power basically at the retail rates of 18 or 19 cents. So we're paying a customer who has the NEM rate, we're paying them at 19 cents basically because that's their avoided cost. Yet we're getting power, we're paying for power at zero cents. So the industry has kind of worked itself out of the market of rooftop to some extent. Many of our public power partners and partners throughout the state, the other members of NCPA, have developed solar rates that you don't have to have the solar on your roof to qualify for. They're called community solar programs, where you buy your little four or five kilowatt part of that 400-megawatt system, and you can get that at whatever that rate is that they're providing for under the community solar. So you get the benefit of being a solar rooftop without all the costs and maintenance of having it on your roof. So, and that's really where SP1, way back in the early 2000s, was set out to do. It was there to help the solar industry become a mature industry that could compete with coal and natural gas and hydro and all those other resources that are what you typically would think of as being resources for a utility.
You're still on point.
And no pushback, I think that's all valid information. The only thing I might push back a little bit on is that the efficiency that they've gained in the solar industry at, at scale, at the large scale. They've also gained that efficiency at the very small scale. So the cost 20 years ago for someone to put solar on their house or to gain benefit, the cost is much different than it used to be. So again, I just want to make sure that we're being conscious of where other cities are with this today. So if we're saying, hey, we're ahead of the game, our city doesn't need to do solar because we're already plugged in here and there. But we look at many other cities around us that have a solar program and have integrated it. I'm, I just want us to be open to that because technology is helping the little guy power his stuff. And I also don't want to create a system where we push a bunch of people because their rates are too high and they just go buy solar from Amazon. And then we can't follow up because people can do that today. You can power your whole house by buying $4,000 worth of batteries, you can do that now. So I think we do have to be sensitive to maybe threading a needle in being open to people's choices on how they want to power things. Anyway, I just wish that maybe there was a fee that we didn't lose money on solar, and I think that's a fair argument, we should at least break even on that. So I just wish it was a comprehensive discussion, but I'm still on three or four.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, Christie, I, I know there, the push for this mandatory minimum fee, I'm still not sold on it because I understand it's a, it's a play on rates, which you've said clearly that there's 260 people that aren't paying, they're paying their fair share. So it's a way of equalizing this, so to speak. Is that correct?
It is a way of making sure that those who are enjoying the, the access to electric, are paying for their, their fair share.
I got you, but it's, it's mostly a benefit to the city, not the residents. I said, I would rather not have that new fee and just let the rates be wherever they are with the base rate. I know some of these people are sold on always adding a fee, but that fee never goes away. And I understand from where your standpoint is, the, building our funds and our reserves. But again, I just don't think that it's that beneficial for us to add a fee on a military, minute, minimum charge. I just don't see it, where one person's going to pay this much per kilo, kilowatt or that. But it's basically just meant to shore up the boat for the people you think aren't paying their fair share. So I don't think that it's beneficial for the residential customers, the people on fixed rate because as you know, conservation comes with, when we spend too much for lights, TV, seniors that are home all day, people that are just home all day, they're going to spend a little bit more anyway, you know? They just probably shut off their lights for conservation. So that's just my, I'm just not sold on that one.
Councilmember Ayala.
I, I just want to bring to focus the fact that I don't think that the rate is because, I don't think that our priority here is us placing a rate so that these very minimal percentage of users that aren't paying their fair share so that we can get them. I, I think the, the priority here is reviewing the cost of service study and realizing that if we stayed on the track that we're on right now, we would potentially by 2029 be at a negative, like major negative downfall for what we need. And so the, the increase is not coming, you guys, because of a small fee or a projected fee. The increase is coming because the cost of study shows that we need to be able to increase our, our, our reserves so that we have availability to be able to invest into our plant, to be able to electrify based on the demand that's coming and on the needs of our customers.
All right, let's go to public comment. If you would like to speak on item number five, you may come to the podium for your five minutes, uh, three minutes, sorry. Or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Steve Bridge. You've spent a lot of time on the, the base rate and the scenarios. But it feels like you lost all the discussion of the various options. And we'd have seven guys coming on when they were going to come on and when we were going to meet our debt load ratios. And I haven't heard a bit of that, and last time we talked, that was a big deal. Are we going to be in a position in five years or 10 years or 13 years? And I heard none of that on this discussion of these various scenarios. So I'll just point that out, it just seemed odd that that was such a big deal last time. And now we're down to, are we going to pay $5 a month or $20 a month in base? Just thought I'd point that out.
Jim Mosby. So you do still have 15 million in reserve, I think, within CPA. So I understand you do have a chunk of money out there. A scenario that wasn't given to you, by 2030, there's a mandate, no more gas-water heaters to be sold in California. No more gas HVAC systems to be sold. So everybody that's up there at that 320 kilowatt average, they're all going to be sitting around the 1,000 kilowatt average real soon. So that, not even, no discussion at all about electrification. They're not all going to do it on 2030, people are starting already, and you're going to see that increase a lot. And that little scenario with the family with a couple of children, they're going to have a gas-water heater, or electric water heater and electric, electric HVAC. Another thing that hasn't been discussed is electric has a $3.5 million loan owed to it that was originally the general fund. If reserves are so low, you guys have the ability, call in the loan. You could put $3.5 million into the electric reserve right away. The other thing you could discuss is the $2 million annual tax, pilot money, franchise fee, that they don't like to discuss. But that's up to you guys to say yes or no about that. That's, that's a lot of money real fast that you could put back in the kitty. You still haven't discussed enterprise reimbursement. I don't know what they might call it now, you don't know how many millions they've taken from that fund. The other avenue that's, that the real elephant in the room, that really is like no discussion about, and that's the line down there. And that's the interest on long-term debt. You guys haven't approved this debt yet, but by 2029, it's $4.1 million a year. That's, that's the big elephant in the room that there's no discussion about. What are you doing? What are you proving this for? You're proving these rate increases on money you haven't even authorized to spend yet. The $71 million they're talking about? Now, remember, if you do the math, and if somebody's sitting at 100 amp service right now, they're currently using about 5% of capacity. they're currently using about five percent of capacity. So what do we really need to upgrade if we add our electrification to it? Do we, can we get by with it? Can we use transfer switches? Does it shift in between? I didn't even bring up electrifying for your car, put one or two charging stations in. What's that number going to be? They're all going to be well over the thousand kilowatt hour a month. Where does that put you? Your scenario, you didn't get anything about that. That future discussion you're talking about, that should have been part of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit confused here. The zero, what's the maximum wattage hours there? Because if I was to run, let's say, year number five, thirty one dollars. Let's say we say they use two hundred kilowatt hours that month. That's fifteen cents a kilowatt hour. And even if you go to the next line down to three hundred and sixty five, that's twenty five cents a kilowatt hour, it's ten cents less. And all these scenarios work out like that with those little base rates down there. The people down there on that original one, under the very first one, they're paying like ten cents a kilowatt hour. Everybody else is paying twenty four cents a kilowatt hour and that's with the base fee. So I'm curious of what's the maximum they can go on that hours there? I just ran it off two hundred. And this price up here is two hundred and sixty five. At two hundred hours, they're only paying ten cents a kilowatt hour where the rest of your customers are paying twenty four cents a kilowatt hour. So I'm curious about why there's such a big difference between that base rate. If we're doing that base rate there, I mean, heck, that's a good deal right there. I just keep everything under two hundred and cut my liquor bill in half. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring the discussion back to council. On any questions for staff, any clarity you'd like? Councilmember Ayala?
My comment would just be that I feel like we are stuck on this on this fee and in reality, we're not considering what is important and what we should be discussing. And the reason why this was dwindled down to just this is because at our last meeting in September, that's the direction that council gave staff. So, I mean, this is for you guys, it's time to make up your mind.
Mr. Ball? Given there was a question about kilowatt per hour and some concerns that it looked like the lower end might be paying a lower kilowatt rate, can you clarify that?
Yes, I'm happy to. We didn't include all the math in this table. This was really just as an example. If you want to see all of the detail of what, how it works out, all of that is in in the packet. It's the electric, the rate design dated nine twenty 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 four. It explains the the base rate and then the way it, and I don't have, if I have, I would have to pull the exact, let's see if I can pull an example. So on page four of twenty six, this is for, I believe this is the original, the original one. You can see that the all customers pay eleven dollars, sixteen dollars, twenty one, twenty six, thirty one. And so depending upon the year, they pay the base charge. Then the energy charge is listed below that. Block one is zero to three hundred and twenty five kilowatt hours. The usage charge is, for example, in year three is point one seven two four zero. So whatever you're using between zero and a hundred, two hundred, two hundred and twenty two, whatever that number is, you're going to be charged that amount of kilowatts times seventeen cents. Plus the base rate of twenty one dollars. If you go over and let's say that you are at three hundred, three hundred and fifty, twenty five of those kilowatt hours are going to be charged at the twenty point two one eight six five. The first three hundred and twenty five are going to be charged at the point one seven two four zero. And on all, regardless of your usage, you're going to be paid, charged that twenty one dollars. So the difference between the different scenarios on this one is in, so in year three, the kilowatt hours is seventeen cents in and the base charge is twenty one. It goes up to twenty one point eight cents in the mid-range and the highest range is just under forty cents. If you're looking at scenario, let's say scenario three, I can get to that page. Looks like that's page eighteen. All customers have a five dollar charge and the rate at the different levels is higher than it was in scenario one. So it's twenty five cents or twenty three cents, twenty six cents and thirty nine cents. So I hope that at least directs you to what pages you can see the breakdown.
Of the different kilowatt hours?
Yeah, we were trying, on this really, and councilmember Ayala said it, we focused on this because that was the question that council had at the last meeting. It seemed like the one thing that in the discussion that was had, that all the other items were resolved, whether or at least the questions were answered, but this was a question that hadn't been answered. And so this is what.
And then the second question I have for you is, you've given us the seventy one million dollars as this projection for what we will need to invest in potentially to electrify our community. When we talk about electrification, my understanding is we need to add additional new substations to modernize and be able to support. We need to add new lines, we need to be able to have the ability, once a person moves to solar, to still maintain the system in case their solar goes down. And as a result, that flat fee, if it ends up being thirty one dollars for, after year five, for the resident who now has moved to solar, they are getting at least a base rate that they will pay, even if they're making their own energy that helps us maintain the rest of the system. So that if they ever go down or choose not to be on solar anymore, they've helped contribute to maintaining that cost of service and maintaining. It also is part of a projection of being able to not only buy back the electric energy they're producing, which is why we need to adjust our, I always get the acronym wrong, the EAM number is currently we're overpaying for solar when we buy it back. But we also want to be able to take that energy back into our system. And currently, we can't do that. So we need to make changes to our system that we can take that additional energy rather than it just going to ground or going to a battery storage on that home. And if they don't do the battery storage on their home, we aren't able to take that energy actually back into, which is one of the things that we discuss as how do we move forward with electrification and how do we handle that load is that those that are producing electric with the solar on their home, being able to put it back into the system and currently we can't do that. So that is the other understanding that I have is that seventy one million is a projection of the level of things we need to invest in. And some of that is debt because we do not have the reserves or the funds to currently do any of that. And I see Mr. Wilkie coming my way in order to help me verify that while we may not know exactly, we have a general idea of the projects we need to invest in and the financing we need to take out in order to move forward on potential projects that we still don't know the cost of because all of us are having to do it.
Yeah, I wanted to bring that up as well. The benefit of having the debt there is it allows us to raise the rates currently on a marginal basis, so it's not a huge increase. The other part of it is just the practicalities of budgeting and revenue. So I was talking to Christie earlier that the responsibility for rates is in the finance area. Responsibility for making sure the lights are on and the lights can go on is in the utility department. So there is a balance between the two. So if the electric department wants to go out and spend seventy one million dollars and has it all planned out, we have to look at that from a budgetary point of view and a revenue point of view. So there's checks and balances between the two divisions. If there's not enough funds to do the work, we have to look at the budget to find a way to get that done with the resources we have. The nice thing about putting in the cost of service study, a ten million dollar placeholder for debt is we don't have to issue that debt until we know exactly what it is that we're going to build. So just because we don't know exactly what we need to build right now, we don't have any debt obligation. So we won't have any debt obligation for those timeframes where until we know exactly what it is we need to build or expand or add capabilities to or add capacity to. And that's all stuff that we have to do as part of a long-range plan. So we know we have to do that long-range plan, but by putting it into the cost of service study in the way we did, it allows us to say, okay, we only have to spend in the first two years, based on that long-range plan, six million dollars. So we're not going to borrow ten million dollars to do six million dollars work. We're only going to borrow what we actually have to do. So in the plan, it's showing what we think is probably the worst-case scenario of how much we have to spend. Based on looking at other utilities that are similar to us, other municipal utilities in California, what they've already gone through and already done to evaluate their system and the things that they found that they have to do to upgrade transformers that right now can serve six or eight houses may only be able to serve four houses. So we have to look at that from the point of view to how many more transformers do we have to put in the system to allow for the state mandated electrification in those areas. Christie mentioned earlier that there are people who have asked to put in heat pumps and the companies they talked to said city's not going to let you do that because there's not enough capacity in that particular area to do it. So we know we have to have, just from that experience, we know there's areas that we have to do some things right now. We're going to do in a comprehensive, thoughtful manner so that when we do get a plan in front of you as part of the budget, we can show you the things that we have to do. And that's probably going to take a year or two at least. And then we have to look at it and implement it so that by 2045, we are able to meet all those extra loads that should be coming in.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Ayala?
Okay, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor and then, I mean, I'm open to whatever the council wants to discuss or vote on. But my motion would be that we go with scenario three, I'm willing to support scenario three, although it only does that five dollar, five dollar, five dollar, five dollar for the next five years. And it is a higher percentage, a slightly higher percentage. You're looking at, staff's recommendation was at one seventy two forty. With scenario three, we're going to be paying twenty three zero seventeen. But if it was to be true, that we're at some point going to get to a thousand kilowatts or above five hundred kilowatts, we're going to be in year three paying the same amount at point thirty nine six four four in either scenario. I don't, I don't know that that will happen by year three. I don't think it's going to move that quickly. I really don't. I think we're moving towards electrification and it's going to take years for it to happen still. And there's a lot of cost that's going to go into it, but I'm willing to support three if the support of the council is there. Scenario three.
Councilmember Ball?
So I'm definitely open to supporting something in that range. I think that both three and four give, you know, residents and it gives small businesses a lot of flexibility and predictability. So a small business, you got a ten dollar fee, it's ten dollars this year, it's ten dollars five years from now. It still leaves within your purview as a small business owner or as a resident, a little bit of that conservation effort, meaning like you want to, you want to pay for more power, then get more power. You want to pay less, use less power. So I don't know, I think I could find a way to support scenario three. It's not everything that I'd hope for, but it gets back to that basic, it's just a small predictable fee.
So is that a second to her motion?
I think I would second that.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, in the whole discussion, I think something that would be very important to include here and I would like councilmember Ayala to maybe throw this in there is that we do a review of this again on the September twenty twenty five, just to make sure we're tracking. Like it was mentioned earlier, it costs X amount of million now, what's it going to cost then? Are we on track? I mean, it doesn't hurt us to do these reviews.
I one hundred percent agree with that. That is something we should be doing rather than leaving it for who knows when again. So I would support that and add that.
May I ask for clarity on that? Are you asking for an update and a check-in or another cost of service review, a full study? Just want to make sure that we are on the same page.
I think an update and a check-in at where we're at, a snapshot of where we're at a year from now versus what we adopted today or what we could potentially adopt today.
Does that help? Mr. Ball, do you agree with the change?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right. Any more questions?
So just because I like the dates, no later than September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, this will return with a review.
If that's the second meeting in the?
It is the second meeting of September in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
And you're adopting the resolution, is that correct?
Adopting the resolution with scenario three.
Yes.
Just to repeat, the motion be to adopt resolution number sixty seven oh one amended to include scenario number three with the caveat with the instruction given to staff to return. That's the motion in the second, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick question, not to throw a loop, but if we're going to have this come back, won't we, and somebody made a good point. We have the unknown of whether, how fast electrification is going to be adopted, right? But can't we tell from usage and measurements, maybe over the course of a year or two, whether the rate of adoption within Lompoc? Won't we be able to see usage climbing if people are buying new water heaters and so? Is that reasonable for us to include that? Can we analyze those numbers in a year or two to see the rate of electrification locally? Is that reasonable?
We have data points that we can analyze. I don't know how much, I don't know how much we're going to have in a year.
Yeah.
But, but we do have data points that we can analyze.
I would just add that in a year, because of the amount, they have to pull building permits for solar. So we can tell you how many solar building permits are pulled in a year. I mean, if that gives you a little better data as to what's happening with solar.
No, I just meant, somebody made the point is maybe people have to buy any water heaters and change their whole system and maybe their electric rate's going to go up by double because they've bought a lot more electric things. Can't we be able to analyze the total usage of people in Lompoc? Is it going up drastically over a year, two or three? I mean, we should be able to analyze it, whoop, usage is way up, right?
Yes, we can look at usage.
And the reason I'm saying that is because our consultant, one of the things that he did mention, I'm just saying, he is amazing at his numbers, but he said, once you get past year three, he's a three to five, he said, I'm going to be wrong. So there is, there should be some flexibility. So there is, there should be some flexibility. We should be analyzing these numbers. And who knows, if we got it wrong, maybe Mr. Mosby's right. We've got $50 million sitting in the bank that we didn't need because everyone doubled their electric use. So again, I want us to be sensitive to the usage changes and those numbers should give us some guidance over the, maybe not in a year, but in year two or three, we should be looking at those numbers. My hope.
Are you asking for that to be a part of that one-year report?
Doesn't have to be part of the one year, but maybe two or three years out, yeah.
Okay, so it's not having to be part of the one-year report. He's just asking us to put that on our radar and potentially do it in two to three years as we get closer to the third year.
Okay, and Councilmember Ball, you'll be here to remind them.
Okay.
I'll let you know how it goes.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. We've had some clarity and requests. Any other concerns, questions? Don't see staff asking for anything. All right, let's vote. And that passes 4-1. Did we have any written communications?
No, ma'am, nothing.
If you would like to speak on any city matter, you have your final two minutes. You may come to the podium or call in at 805-875-8201.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So I still have, since we just finished talking about electrics, I still have a little bone to pick with, with the council, and that is, I didn't ever see it within the Utility Commission or never I saw it brought up to council, but this is probably the fourth time I've come up, where you have an exception for electrical, when you go in for commercial, that you can just get electric. But as a, as a rental property owner who has rental property, if I want to get just electric for my security system and my lights, I have to buy water, trash, and sewer. And so instead of me paying, say, $50, I have to spend $250. If you look at the fact that about 7,000 non-owner units are, are in the market, and let's just say at any given time, there's a 5% vacancy, that adds up to about $1 million a year of extraction from rental property owners. And then you wonder why we have to make raises. It's, it's a serious issue that I think should get the same consideration as the commercial people, and I would like you to address that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Aiello.
I just wanted to touch on the accident that happened on Santa Lucia Road and Highway One over the weekend. You know, it breaks my heart every time I hear about an accident happening, that happening there. And when my son was growing up, I always made that as an example for him, to tell him, when you are traveling in this area, you slow down, you don't speed up. And every time I see something happen, it, it reminds me that we're still not doing anything about it. It's outside of our jurisdiction, I get it. I did place some calls today in hopes of getting the attention of some of the people that, that is their jurisdiction. And I'm just bringing it up because I would like to see potentially our, our city at least make the calls and say what can be done, because there are residents of our community that, that travel through there, even if it's not in our jurisdiction. And anything we can do to mitigate, I, I told the person that I was speaking to today, I said, listen, I, I understand that it's years in the making, whether you put, someone said a roundabout, I don't like the idea of a roundabout, not there. Someone said an overpass, I've thought about a traffic light, but at minimum, a sign that says, slow down, don't speed up. Or, or if you're coming out of Santa Lucia Road, I know those aren't traffic signs, but a sign that would say, be patient and wait. That would go a long way into reminding the driver, be patient and wait. I know it's not a typical traffic sign and, you know, maybe that's not the solution, but at minimum, something that reminds people to just slow down in that area because we continue to lose lives there. And I was really, really torn up about the fact that it was an 11-year-old grown. We've had even babies be in accidents in that area. It's just a sad thing. So I just ask that our city officials are able to make those calls and bring the proper people to the table that need to have that discussion.
On that note, I do know that SB CAG, the city of Lompoc, the base, and Caltrans have been meeting regularly and are working on a solution. I have seen survey crews out there. I go that direction quite a bit, heading towards either Sacramento or Santa Maria meetings for county-level stuff, and they've had survey crews out there. And there is discussion about an immediate solution as well as a long-term solution. So I don't know what the results of those discussions are yet because they are still having those meetings, but they are working on them. So it is sad every time we lose somebody there and on Robinson's Bridge, which has been accelerated, has more money put to it, still doesn't have a start date till two or three years from now. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up Friends of the Library are going to be hosting our friends Elvis and Frank Sinatra on Saturday, the 12th of October. Tickets are $40, $70 for a couple, and they are available at the Anderson Rec.
Thank you for repeating that. That was on my list. I bought my tickets already. Um, Councilmember Ball.
So I just want to, I just thank Councilwoman Aiello for bringing that up about that. We were, again, we weren't close to it, they'd already cleaned up most of it, but we were just coming back from a, a nice day up north with our son, and it's a really sad thing to come around the corner and see all the stuff. And it immediately reminded me, it wasn't maybe a year or two ago, there was another young child that was lost in that same area. And again, one is too many. But I really appreciate that, and if there's anything we as a city can do to show that, that we care about that issue, I'd be hopeful. Let's be realistic, it's probably going to take 15, 20 years for them to ever build an overpass, but it could take them literally a few minutes to, if we begged the base, maybe they could park a police officer out there once in a while during rush hour, and maybe that police officer would not be a test crash dummy. So people could take it seriously. Again, if we're looking for an immediate solution to that, we may have to get somebody to actually sit there and make sure people slow down. The only other thing I wanted to mention, and I, I, I'm going to put this up as a council request, I don't know if we'll go for it or not, but I don't know if in the past we've ever as a council voted or unanimously voted for whether or not to support a school bond. And I'm in full support of Measure M, it's a school bond, and I'd like to make a council request to see if there's any interest in council in creating a, you know, proclamation or to voice our support for this. I think it's vital for us to have this conversation. There's a lot of mythology that goes around and, and how things work, but Lompoc is just way behind a lot of other cities, neighboring cities. They don't make it political, they just figure out how to use the system and they take care of their schools and fund them correctly. If you have questions on it, I'd be happy to talk to you about why I support it personally. But for those of you that are still uncertain or you need to learn a little bit more, there is a forum happening tomorrow night at the Grange Hall. It's happening at, I think, 6:30. Full community forum, so if you have some interest, you have some questions, you have some doubts, or you've heard something, I just encourage you all to try to participate, try to learn what you can. I won't tell you how to vote, but do your homework and see if this is a good for, for you. So again, tomorrow night, there's a community forum. But I guess back to my council request, I wonder if there's interest in supporting this.
So normally, you would get a yes out of me because I personally support Measure M. The issue is with our council handbook. It does not allow us currently to take a vote on an issue like that and support it. So that gets back to you and I have an ad hoc to review that council handbook, so we should probably get back to it. We started it before the pandemic, pandemic sidetracked us. And so I'm happy to discuss potentially making that change to our council handbook. But unfortunately, it's currently written where we cannot do that. All right. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to just thank everybody for paying attention. And also, I had an incident probably about a month, month and a half ago, where my vehicle was hit, you know, there was several vehicles hit, and, and my vehicle was totaled. And the police and fire, the people that showed up, they did an excellent job, and I was very proud. A lot of them recognized me right there going out to see my car up on the sidewalk and stuff, but I was really proud to see how they handled it. And there was quite a bit of commotion, so I wanted to, kudos to the police and fire department for, there was something out on West Pine where someone took out a few cars. One of them was mine. And I just want to thank you guys. It was, I was proud to know these people and, and the way they handled themselves and spoke to all the people. So, thank you.
All right, so as your appointee to NCPA, I attended the annual conference. At the annual conference, it was a transition into my becoming the chair for this next year, representing not only Lompoc but all of NCPA. So it is a great honor that the 14 other community members, representatives have elected me to represent all of them as well as you. Future had its first official, Future for Lompoc Youth had its first official fundraiser. They are doing an amazing job, and I urge everyone to get involved, whether it's funding them, whether it's donating, whether it's volunteering your time as a mentor, or giving the students an opportunity to interact with you as a community leader. So please consider those opportunities. I attended SB CAG's regular meeting, the City Manager and Mayor's League, every other month meeting that we have where we get together with other cities and interesting discussions about what we're all experiencing and having the same problems with. And then we also had our second official meeting of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and City Joint Economic Development Committee meeting. There is a city council candidate forum happening in this space on Thursday night at 6:30 PM. That's this 30, Thursday, at October 3rd at 6:30 PM. If you cannot attend in person, you may register with the League of Women Voters of North County or AAUW Vandenberg Lompoc Village to watch via Zoom. And if you can't be in person or watch live via Zoom, if you at least register, you will get the link afterwards. And so it is the only forum publicly, and so I encourage everyone to watch, all candidates are participating. And then for those of you that love the murder mystery, there is an adult activity through the library called the Whodunit Kit, and clues are being placed around the library and part of it. So there are plenty of kits to check out through October to do a murder mystery investigation at the library. So I encourage you guys to enjoy that. With that, we will adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on October 15th of 2024.